Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter
Good evening and welcome to the Town of Exeter March 17, 2025 Select Board Meeting. So the hour is 7 o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. I'd like to introduce the Board. To my right, Selectman Dan Chartran. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Well, Mr. Chair? No, not quite yet. Good evening, fellow Select Board member.
Selectwoman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for being here.
Selectwoman Nancy Belanger, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
And our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine, good evening.
Good evening.
Our Assistant Town Manager, Melissa Roy, over there. Our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel, good evening. My name is Nico Papakosindis, and unfortunately, Selectwoman Julie Gilman had an unavoidable conflict that came up late this afternoon, so she will not be with us tonight. First order of business is to introduce the Town Clerk for the swearing-in. Ms. Kohler.
I have some instructions.
Okay.
All right. Everybody who's going to be sworn in tonight, if you would line up in front of the Select Board Committee or the table, you have your oath of office out in the lobby on the table with pens to sign. Once I swear you in, if you could just go sign the paper, it's all you have to do, sign it, and we'll be all signed.
And please also sign the sign-in sheet. That's with Joanna, so she knows who came and was sworn in.
So line up. Go ahead and line up in a straight line like this. Side by side, side by side. Like this.
This is like this.
I feel like I should go out in the hall and at least be able to take.
Okay. All right. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I.
I.
Please state your name. Do solemnly and sincerely. Swear and affirm. That I will faithfully. And impartially. Discharge and perform. All the duties incumbent on me. As, please state your position. According to the best of my abilities. Agreeable to the rules and regulations. Of this Constitution. And the laws of the State of New Hampshire. So help me God. Congratulations, everybody. If you just come out in the lobby and sign your oath. We'll be back. We got him first in line to sign, so we can keep moving along.
It's all right. It's all good.
Okay. Okay. And though everybody is out in the lobby, just to, congratulations to all those that were elected last week, re-elected in most cases, and look forward to working with everybody in the future. We ready to move on?
I am.
Okay.
Ready.
The next order of business is the Select Board reorganization. This is the opportunity to nominate and vote on Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk of the Select Board. Are there any nominations for Chair?
I move, we re-elect you, Mr. Chair, if you would.
I will second that.
Agree to continue serving.
There's a motion and a second, and I need to ask if there are any other nominations? Seeing none, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries for zero. Do you have any nominations for Vice Chair?
I will nominate Molly Cowan to be Vice Chair.
And I would second that motion.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none and no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries for zero. And I would entertain a nomination for Clerk.
I would nominate Nancy, if you would be willing to serve.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations? And seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries for zero. Thank you. Before we get into public comment, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody that came out and voted last week, and and I know Selectwoman Gilman would feel the same. It's really an honor and a privilege to serve this community, to have earned the trust and the faith of the voters, and speaking for myself, there's not a day that I don't take any of that for granted. It's a pleasure to work in a community that has the dynamic staff that we have, and I'm incredibly humbled in the faith and trust that the Board has in me, and it is indeed an honor and a privilege to work with the four of you, so I'm very, very grateful for that. Thank you.
If I could respond?
Of course.
I appreciate all three of you for stepping up and providing leadership for this Board, and you have my appreciation and my undying gratitude. You make it easy for me to be on this Board.
I would also add my great thanks to all of, you know, I mean, I think we work well as a team. I am thrilled to have Julie back as well. Hopefully, she's back in full force, and you, Dan, I think where I feel really lucky.
Thanks.
I guess I'd be remiss, and I'll leave it at this, that, you know, this Board, you know, doesn't always agree on everything, and, but we listen, we're attentive, and we're open to new ideas and other perspectives, but most importantly, I'm proud that this Board leads with empathy and with kindness, with civility, and with dignity, and that's very refreshing at this local level, and I hope that that can spread elsewhere.
I'm just gonna, thank you to everyone. I've got a little sidetracked there for a moment because Molly surprised me. I thought.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. It's fine. I'm honored that you nominated me. I just, I really don't know how to put this into words really well, but I hope people who follow the Select Board understand how effective this Board is, how professional I think this Board is, how we always, always, always look out for the best interest of the entirety of our town. And I think it's safe to say, I can say for all of us, we do it. We're very proud of the work we do. We love our community, and we're honored to serve it, so.
That's very well said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to public comment, there don't see any members of the public stepping up. There's nobody on Zoom, so we'll move forward to approval of the minutes. I would ask if there are any amendments or revisions to the regular meeting minutes of the March 3, 2025 Exeter Select Board Meeting?
I have none.
I don't.
And with that, I'd entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Select Board regular meeting minutes of March 3, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to say how appreciative I am of Joanna's work year-round. Thank you. Since we're appreciating, you are essential to us functioning well, and I appreciate everything you do.
And I second that. With a motion and a second, no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries for zero. Okay, we have several appointments and a resignation to take up this evening. I would entertain a motion to appoint Jamie Saroyes to the Robinson Trust with a term ending in 2029.
Second.
You're looking for a motion. Are you, are you moving?
Oh, I seconded it. Oh, my gosh. I moved.
So moved.
And I will second.
Oh, my gosh.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries for zero. Mr. Dean, before we take up the next appointment, you were going to get some information. There was a question that the applicant asked.
Yes.
About her status.
Yes, there was a question about whether the candidate had a conflict of interest serving as both on the Tenants Council as their lead and on the Housing Authority as the resident representative, and Tony TeShara, who is the Executive Director of the Housing Authority, reported back to me on the issue and said that there was not a conflict and that she could serve.
Terrific.
And I did contact her, and she expressed a continued willingness to serve on the committee.
Wonderful. Thank you. And is there a term on this one?
Yes, this is April 2025.
Great. And she'll be notified by your office?
Yeah.
And if, I would entertain a motion to appoint Patricia Scott Hall to the Exeter Housing Authority?
So moved. Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries for zero. And finally, I would entertain a motion, excuse me, Mr. Dean, this, this one's also in April 2025?
It is.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to appoint Kelsey Dunville from an alternate to a voting member of the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee Commission with a term to expire April 2025.
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries for zero. And finally, entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Kimberly Barner from the 250th Celebration Commission.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries for zero. Thank you. Moving into our discussion item. First up, we have an election update. We have our Town Moderator here. Congratulations on your reelection, Kate Miller, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks very much. We are using the AccuVote ballot counting machines, I think, for the last time, and they performed beautifully, but starting next year at the town election, we'll be able to use the new vote tabulation machines, which we're very excited about. Those have served us well, but they're a bit on the old and creaky side, so it'll be nice to have new machines. We did not have problems with delays. We had a few lines for people to feed the four-page town ballot into the ballot counting machine, but that was alleviated and was not a real problem. So thanks very much to the voters who came. Our turnout was pretty typical for a town election, so not high. I think we had maybe around like a 12% turnout, something like that. So not high. We'd love to see more voters, but it was good. And things worked very smoothly throughout the day, so we were very grateful. One thing that was a big change was the laws have changed since the last election in the fall on voters registering to vote and what documents they would need to have in order to do that. And it now requires, under New Hampshire law, that voters cannot use an affidavit to attest under oath that what they're saying is true in terms of citizenship or domicile. They have to have the documents. We did not have to turn away any voters. The supervisors of the checklist, I think, registered maybe nine new voters, which is a decent number for a town election. I think it's going to be important for us, and I will try working with Town Manager and our wonderful communications staff to get the message out to voters about the new rules, because it may take folks a couple of months to pull together all the documents that are needed if they have to register. So we don't want people to be caught short, especially during the 2026 midterm elections, where I think there may be a lot more interest. So no voters were turned away from registering the polls. The people who came all had what they needed. But that's a, that's a big shift, and we want to make sure that voters are aware of that.
What documents do they need or?
So I, I'm not going to be able to say all these things off the top of my head, but they need to be able to establish with documents identity and domicile in the Town of Exeter, and citizenship and age. And a New Hampshire driver's license, although it's called a real ID, does not establish citizenship. It can demonstrate, I think, all the other requirements. And if a person doesn't have an ID, the election officials are still allowed to vouch for their identity. But for folks to register to vote, they do need the citizenship, which is a passport or a birth certificate. Not everyone has a passport. It can be expired, so long as it's within five years of expiration. But it's the birth certificates that are a bit of a time consumer for folks to be able to request. You can, if you're born in New Hampshire, you can go into any clerk's office in any town and request your own birth certificate. So for folks who are born here, it's pretty easy. But if, like many of us, we've moved around, you have to go back to your birth place, either by phone, or mail, or email, or something, to get that. And it can take, you know, sometimes weeks or months for that to get processed. And with passports, if you had one that was older than five years, it would definitely take several months to update. So planning now, you know, at the beginning of this next election cycle, I think, is important for voters, especially young people who are turning 18 around that interval. I mean, there's a lot of adulting that folks get to face when they turn 18, and, and that's just one of them. So it still is possible to register to vote. You just have to do a little bit more planning ahead to be able to do that, so.
This is not directed at you, Madam Moderator, but I think that this is appalling. This change is horrific, and I know of three women in New Hampshire who were turned away because their birth certificate, the name on their birth certificate, did not match their current's name, and that was simply because they got married and changed their name. And this is disenfranchisement, and it is wrong and against everything that we stand for, my belief as a town.
So just to be clear, there has been virtually zero voter fraud that's been documented, where people who were not in fact eligible to register to vote had actually registered and cast their votes. So this is a change that is going to create much more in the way of complication and time. And I think for those married women, that's going to strike them as a big surprise. So there are a lot of new rules and a lot of new changes. So figuring that out ahead of time is going to be important.
Yes, and fighting back against the laws that are changing is, I think, really important as well.
The birth certificate one especially is concerning to me, but.
So, yeah, that is, that is tricky.
Not on you, of course.
Yes. The other thing that we've talked about since the general election is the time it takes voters to get inside the building when we have a really busy election. So we've had some conversations with the school district about possible other facilities. I think it probably makes sense for me to chat with the Town Manager and see what we might be able to do in terms of town assistance. The school, it's, it takes a full day to set up the polling place. Then their polling is going on for a full day, and then it's at least half a day to break it down again. So it's a big ask of any of the public schools that have ongoing programs, which often use their gymnasium for multiple kinds of things throughout the day, to be able to put it offline for two and a half days. So, and, and again, the accessibility of the school gyms is not fabulous either, so. I think we're looking at all options, so I thought I would explore some more with the Town Manager and see what we could put in place before the next big election.
Just to be clear, you're thinking of a second site for voting?
So there are several different options. One is a, is splitting into two precincts, which would require duplicating, you know, clerk, moderator, supervisor of the checklist, so it would be, you know, more bodies, which could be its own challenge. And I'm not sure that we would have still, you know, the kind of good access that I would like. My biggest concern, really, at the general election, was people with mobility issues having to stand or, or wait in a line that was moving very slowly for 45 minutes. And I know of at least a few voters who left because they could not tolerate that. And we had folks with wheelchairs, and we were trying to meet those needs, but I think looking that, at that more systematically and seeing what our options are. The high school uses golf carts at graduation in their parking lot. I think we need to consider everything and try to figure out what's, what's going to help our voters.
Yeah, I did have one, that was going to be one of my questions. A woman who was in tears and pain came to me and about more of a handicapped accessible option. And I told her you were aware of it, but that I would make sure that she heard that tonight.
Yes, thank you.
We were considering your options, our options on that.
Yeah, and the Select Board was fantastic. When we asked for additional poll pads right after the election, you immediately approved them. So we have four additional poll pads, because that will help the speed with which people are coming in. It's about 100 voters a minute with those poll pads. It's just amazing. So if we have several more, we'll be able to shorten, shorten the lines, and people won't be standing as long. But I think there, there is a limit to how many bodies we can get into the gym. We need to really look at, at some of those issues. So I'm glad to work with you on that.
I do have one more question, if I could.
Of course.
So someone else on Tuesday, it's a neighbor of mine, actually, who talked to me about postcards to be sent out to residents reminding them of our March Election Day, because she was surprised at how many people she knows that had no idea we were voting. That said, she thought it was actually a town, the town itself that sent them. Our Town Manager checked into that, and it wasn't the town itself. But is that something that we could do within the four corners of our election law? Is that something a town can do, just to send out reminder postcards without talking about warrants or, or anything other than just a reminder of the date?
So putting out information about the date and time of the election, I think, is probably perfectly fine. But I am not an expert on that.
Okay.
But I think, you know, it's a question of, you know, what are the most effective means? And I'm open to everything, you know, perhaps more electronic signs is another possibility.
Okay.
Or other types of signage.
So if that's.
I know that our, our website is excellent, from my perspective. I think our Mr. Glowacki and folks who do the Exeter TV programming do a great job of doing public service bulletins and
Biweekly Report?
Putting out that stuff, yes. So I think that's, that's good, but not everybody looks at the website, so.
We had people who, that woman in particular, signed both herself and her husband up for the biweekly report in that moment. So if that's something that we're willing to explore, the Board's willing to explore, you'd be okay with that and want to be followed a lot with the process, maybe check with Town Council to see if that.
Yeah, just as a reminder to voters.
Yes.
I think nonpartisan is good.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, indeed.
That's it for me.
Thank you.
Many of you were there all day, so thank you.
Inside or all clock?
Yes. Thank you.
And thank you to you and the supervisors of the checklist and all of the volunteers. It is a fun, joyful day to experience democracy, and I'm really glad that nobody was turned away. And it was really interesting. I love to look at the, you know, the comments under social media, under all of, a lot of our election results. And it was so interesting to see, like, people be like, we should have two days of voting. And, and I, I mean, I wish that we could have expanded access. There are so many states that offer early voting and increased access to the polls, and with all of our restrictions, we were able to get around that because we allowed people to. people to register same day. But, now that we've had, we have the country's most restrictive voter suppression bill on record, that loophole to get around the Help America Vote Act is, I, I mean, I just don't see it. So, thank you so much for all of the work that you do. It's so interesting to see people say, "I wish we had more time to vote," when, you know, they consistent, we, we, we could have this, but it would require a very large change and, and conversation for folks in Concord. But, that is something that we would love to see.
Yes.
Thank you.
It went very smooth. Thanks to your leadership, and it, it really did. I was there most of the day, and...
You were.
By the end of the night.
So, our clerk is amazing.
I don't know how awake I was to count, but I had a good counter mate, and we got it through. We got through.
Yes, thank you.
Well, I missed being inside with you, but thank you again for your leadership and all of the volunteers and the supervisors of the checklist. And I also want to thank those that were willing to volunteer for the elected officials that could not be working. So, shout out to them as well.
We, we, really, especially the last minute, I mean, to all of them, but there was one glitch near the end. And so, a special thank you to a few people who, literally, the last minute, were able to fill in.
Yep.
And loved it. So...
It's fun.
Yeah, it is.
It is fun.
Democracy in action, nothing like it.
Well, we look forward to working with you as we move forward, and anything that we can do to help advertising not only elections, but, you know, the new rules, the bi-weekly report, Mr. Glawacki's talents. So, we'll look forward to having you back.
Great, thank you so much.
Very soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate.
And congratulations again on your reelection.
I know. And thank you for serving.
So thankful that you do this.
Mr. Dean, would you like to walk us through an election recap?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. Based on the outcome of the warrant, I think that it was a good night at the polls for town initiatives, and we have our work plans certainly laid out in front of us. I will start with, right out of the gate, the Drinkwater Road groundwater development passed with 67% in favor. And, we are in process right now of working with the academy on the easement that is needed for that particular project, so that is going well. And, we expect to continue the good work on that project. And, the Pickpocket Dam removal also passed, 67.5% in favor. So, we are waiting for a grant notification from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation. We should know that by April 8th, and we expect to hear, hopefully, positive news from that. The Linden Street Bridge repairs, according to Director Cronin, that is in Wright Pierce's hands, and will be bid out shortly, so that's ready to go as well. The DPW Fuel Island Station replacement also passed, so that will be a project that will kick off, I think, in the late spring, early summer of this year. And then, the use of excess bond proceeds for the sewer projects and the, the front pine in Linden Street sewer and drainage improvements also passed. So, that's, again, exciting news, and the roundabout project can now commence in full, full bore, and we'll be working on that in the spring and the summer of this year. So, people can expect that. Then, the operating budget passed with 65% in favor. That was a good number, and that will allow us to hire a full-time human resources director, which you'll hear a little bit more from Mr. Keegan in a couple of minutes on that. Also, the senior coordinator will be able to hire that position, which is great news, too. And, just appreciate everybody's support of the budget. It was an important budget year for a number of reasons, and the turnout was good and heavily in favor, so we appreciate that. Water and sewer budgets also passed pretty handily, 81% for water, 69% for sewer. The collective bargaining agreements that we talked a lot about at the board level passed with 72% in favor, 69% in favor, and 74% in favor. So, really overwhelming support for those bargaining agreements. So, everybody, I know, got a good boost from that and is very grateful for it and appreciative of the voter's support in that, in that arena. And, moving on, so we have capital equipment. The sidewalk tractor passed as well, so did the dump truck. So, we'll be replacing those key pieces of equipment through Public Works. The ADA accessible van also passed, so we'll be following up on that. The EV charging facility article passed, again, 62.5%. So, these are all between 59 and 64, 70% in favor. So, good, again, good numbers there. The appropriate to sick leave trust fund passed as well. The appropriation to the Parks Improvements Capital Reserve Fund passed again. That's been a several-year success story at this point. The Styrofoam recycling unit article passed, and that is going to be in Kristen's bailiwick to follow through on that and continue to pursue the grant that we talked about, which we're excited about that. The replacing the fire utility truck, I know they're very happy that that passed with 77% in favor. So, we'll be able to replace that old utility truck in the fire department. The transfer station improvements article, sort of a sister article to the Styrofoam recycling unit, passed, 59.8% on that one. So, again, a summertime project, we'll be working on that with, with Steve and his, his group. The ADA fund passed again, 63.1% in favor. The new Sestres Centennial Fund passed, 58.2% in favor. And, the appropriation to trust fund that we do every year, that's a Swayze Parkway customary article, 81% in favor. The TIF plan was successfully amended, 75% in favor on that. So, we'll be breaking out the shovels and everything for Epping Road here shortly, and Director Cronin can talk more about that if needed. The 79E citizens petition passed with 80.4%, so that means that 79E is in effect repealed. So, that takes that off the table for now, and that's where we'll go. So, there'll be no more 79E applications in front of the board. The citizens petition articles all passed by varying amounts, mainly anywhere from 58, 59% to 80%. And, that was, the requirement on that was to write a letter, which we've done, and I know, Mr. Share, you signed those letters this past weekend, so those are out the door already.
All 40 of them.
All 40 of them, yes. And, so that article's been fulfilled as far as the article and the way it laid out on the warrant. So, all in all, I'd say a very good night for us.
Very good night, and I'm excited. We're going to see a lot of you this year.
Lots to do.
And that's a good thing. Thank you, Mr. Dean. And, to the petitioner for those, for those five citizens petitions, those letters I did sign over the weekend, and they have gone out to our respective elected officials. So, happy to pass that along. And just, you know, thank you to the voters for continuing to support our budget. Our collective bargaining agreements, this board has worked really hard over the last two years to work towards retaining employees, you know, making it attractive to come work in Exeter and stay in Exeter, and also looking at our organization as a whole and how we can make improvements. So, the human resources director was one of the first steps that we needed to take with, with budget money, but we're appreciative of the voters having faith in what we're trying to accomplish here. So, with that, I'm going to introduce Mr. Bill Keegan, who's been working with us for almost two years now on, on just that. So, welcome back, Mr. Keegan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be back here. It's been a while, right? But, we've done a lot in the past, past few months. It's now been, I think about 14 months was the last time we talked.
Yeah.
So, it's hard to believe, but it's gone by fast. So, we're going to start that? Okay. Very good.
Thanks, Gabe.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to tell you that I, I've been here all day today. I've been meeting with, with Steve, and with Cory, and the team, and the E-Team, going over a number of different things that we've been working on. I actually was here a few weeks ago, talking with, with members of the fire and police departments, the two chiefs, trying to catch up with them as well, to see how things change. There's been a few changes there as well, you know, Fire Chief's a new chief now, so new promotion in that operation. So, we just wanted to try and, you know, reset the, set the goals and to try and get things on the right track, yeah, which, they're doing a terrific job, so I, I really don't have any major concerns in that direction. So, we're at phase two of the, of the process, starting, starting this, starting this time right now. So, and what I've done is just sort of put together a few thoughts about where we are at this point. So, the, the first part is to just, is to more or less to, to talk about what the phase two project has, phase one project did, and the results that we were able to achieve. The first was to evaluate the results and management changes of, in the structure, and based upon what we have talked about, the, and what I presented in the report, you actually did a lot of those things already. So, there are some, some items that we're going to postpone until transition occurs in the organization, which makes all, all the sense in the world. We re-interviewed individual departments to evaluate adaptations and operational changes in reporting structure, which means that we basically wanted to see where people were with the changes that we put in place, that we recommended to you all, and, and so far, so good. Things have worked actually very, very well. So, we're very pleased to see the, see the results in that. Evaluated the new practices and the, with the select board and the town manager's office to see how those changes were working. The creation of the so-called E-Team has worked out very, very well. Glad to see that you have that level of executive discussion going on all, all the time, to make sure that everybody's on the same, same place in terms of making, making changes and recommending changes to the board, or recommendations to the board. We formed a management coaching, and we'll be doing that later on, but we're doing some of that right now by mentoring various members of, of the, of the team, of the management team primarily. We talked, I've already talked with the deputy fire chief who became the fire chief, and also have talked about members of the various, members of the staff about mentoring and coaching them. And we've actually made some recommendations even early on, talking to Russ and the rest of the team about things that we should be looking for, and, and actually taking what we did at the first level of the organization, moving it down to the second level of the organization, to see how well they, they're connected at that level as well. So, the, the first thing, we wanted to take a look, notable thing, things particularly in the Public Works Department, was the number of vacant positions that were occurring there. And that has, it's been a challenge, of course, as you all know. I think the fact that you've appointed Steve, and Steve has done a terrific job, from what I can see. You just need more people like him. That's the, that's the biggest challenge he faces. And that, what he's done so far is really put the organization back on the right course. Everybody did a good job just keeping, maintaining the organization the way it was, but he was able to maybe move the organization, move the meter forward a little bit by, by his leadership, and so I'm, I'm pleased to see that. We talked at length this morning about some of the things that he's working on. He's got a very full plate over the next course of, the next several years, actually, with all the things he's got going on. And I find it to be true, in most DPW operations, that's why it's so critical to have a good leader in that organization. Now, the challenge he faces that, is that the next level of his organization is, is pretty thin right now. So, what, what we'd like to do is try and help him along with that effort, you know, if he needs help with, you know, finding, engineers in particular are very, very hard to find in this market right now. So, he's down like three of them in, in his organization, so he needs to help to try and find those. And so, we'll talk about how we can do, maybe help in that area. As far as some of the other vacancies, some of the, some of his operation, for instance, he's got in, in, in the highway division, that division is actually fully, fully staffed at this point, but he needs help in water and sewer. And the water and sewer, the challenge with that is that most of those are licensed positions, and so there's not just a big pool of candidates for those. So, we're talking about ways in which we can train internally to try and maybe get some of those folks to, to get the licenses, so you can actually grow those positions organically and within the organization itself. Some of the, the challenges is the inability to retain good talent, but you've actually done a good job of, of addressing that in this past with, with the recent contracts, by getting the contracts up to where they should be. You're being much more competitive with your wage positions right now. I think you'll do a much better job of retaining folks because of that. So, I'm, I'm pleased to see that you've done a good job in addressing that, and you heard that, and you listened to it, and you, and you addressed it collectively, which I think is a great jo, great job, and congratulations to you for doing that. The lack of ability to grow people within the organization has been a challenge, but I think that will sort of take care of itself as the town continues to take on new, new staff members. And also with the addition of the HR director, which is a big key position, which, which the town manager mentioned earlier, that you really need to have that in order to actually build and train people with internally, and also provide the right guidance and direction for them in terms of developing their professional growth. So, I, I'm really pleased to see that you took that step, because in this day and age, and I even just did a similar study in another community in Massachusetts on the North Shore, about the same type of thing, and, and even it was a small organization, but having a person that can actually help develop the staff internally is a very, very big step for organizations to have nowadays. And not only that, but just HR in general is so complicated, that you really need a person that's professionally trained to do that kind of work, and, and you can't just add it to someone else's list of things to do, because it, it just gets, gets watered down, and we don't want, don't want to see that happening. So, the results achieved over the last 12 months are essentially the three, three important things, the filling of the vacant positions, the inability to retain good, good talent was, is actually going to, to continue to develop over time, and the lack of ability to grow talent from within the organization have all been addressed in ways, in a positive way. I'm pleased to see that those steps that have been taken. Some of the operational achievements that were made were during the past 12 months, the town of Exeter has improved in the following ways. The ET, E-Team was formed. That was not one of our original recommendations, but it was one that sort of evolved organically, and I'm glad to see that it did, because I think it actually makes a lot of sense. And I've actually going to, I'm actually taking that approach and using it in other places now. So, so to your credit, you actually developed something which we didn't think about, and so I'm, I'm glad to see that's happened. It's important, I think, particularly for town managers, not to feel like they're on an island. And I think, I talked with Russ about that today, that, you know, it's, when you're in that position, it's very difficult sometimes to be looking at things just on an individual basis. Much better to have a, a team-oriented approach, even though, you know, with the operations team meetings now, and the, and the different levels of discussion that are going on, it's a lot more supportive environment to, to actually make solid decisions and recommendations to the board. During the past 12 months, the, the weekly operations meetings have been held, which has helped to forge a bond between many of the town's operating departments. I think that came through loud and clear during the Capitol Plan Process this year, where everybody sort of pitched in together to, to create a plan that, that everybody really felt supported on, and ultimately led to the, to the, to the funding of the new police fire, the fire station. So, congratulations on that. I know that's, that's not easy to do, but that's exactly why this team approach works, is, is that everybody realizes the value of what they're doing. And I don't think that, and I think in talking to individual members of the staff, they all felt like, you know, really didn't have a full appreciation of what the needs were in each, each other's organization, until we had this kind of a discussion and this kind of environment. So, I think that's really contributing to the success of, and the ability to move forward on all the initiatives that you're, that you're, that you're taking on right now, collectively, collectively and individually. And I'm glad to see that happening, because it's, it's something that, that, you know, that's the only way you're going to be successful in, in this environment right now, given to so many different conflicting challenges that are going on in the world. During the past 12 months, the, the restructuring of the departments has led to a less confusion and improved level of internal communications. I think that that is something that, which I'm glad, I'm great, glad to see that that's happening, so that, so it's better for the decision-makers, such as yourselves, to be in a position to understand how the staff feels, and that, and that they're aligned and, and thinking the same way. That gives you the confidence to, to make decisions in a direction that's, that's positive for you, and, and gives you the level of, of confidence in the community that you're making good, good, sound decisions. Areas of the organization that still need some work, further review of the Public Works Department is needed, and we, and we spent a lot of time with, with Steve this morning, looking at his organization. I'll be providing further information and recommendations to him over the next few months. Work on improved internal communications at the department level, and, and, and look at, look, look at the ways to developing the, the, the team-oriented approach at a second level down below the, the front level, the frontline discussions. I'm glad to see that that will be, that'll be going on now. And hiring the new HR director is, is truly a plus to help guarantee success. Want to make sure that the mission for this new, new division is clear, and the initial priorities are identified for the new leader of this role. We've already had some conversations today about that, but we want to be very careful that we don't water down the effect by, by putting too much on the shoulders of this individual right out of the gate. Let's make sure that they have a, a workable course of, of responsibilities going on right out of the gate. And, management coaching is probably the last piece of this. This is, that management coaching mentoring occur throughout these, throughout the summit to assist new managers and, and to develop the existing managers to see... managers and to develop the existing managers to see if in fact there's ways we can actually improve upon their ability to do their work. I think some of it's happening already organically, but I think just, for instance, we were talking about a couple of things this afternoon about how, you know, we think you can probably approach it a little bit better if you do this, you know, and try this as opposed to that. It's just, they're all, they're recommendations, but you know, it's based on 40-something years of experience that some of these things work and some don't work as well. So I think this is just an opportunity to try and learn from each other and hopefully I can continue to support the organization the way I have already. And as part of the efforts to determine coaching needs, we will continue to meet with management team, the board members, and department to identify management gaps. A lot of progress has been made during the past year. I'm truly excited about what's come out of this report and how you've reacted to it. Not every community reacts to these kind of recommendations that you did, so you've embraced it and you've taken on the responsibility of making sure that it's successful. And so I'm truly grateful to all of you for doing that and moving the organization forward the way you have. And I'll continue to help you any way I can as a result of that. So in summary, the new organizational structure appears to be working well with a significant measure of success. The next steps will be to reinforce the changes that have been made so far and that they become long-lasting and promote long-term success. We've already identified some adjustments that are needed, and the conversations with the team have been very productive. We want to spend some additional time with the Public Works Department to see if any changes are needed after the director's first year on the job. There are a few things we hope we can still help him with. And we will be doing some management training and mentorship throughout the next several months, and we'll be seeking feedback from the board members, the E-Team, and the department manager to how to best formulate the needs of this next phase. So this is, that's it in summary. And just want to say thank you to all of you for your support and for the work that you've done, and you should be all congratulated collectively, organizationally, and from a board that you've adopted these recommendations and made them work. So I'm really truly grateful to see that happen. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Bill. Any questions or thoughts for Bill?
A few.
Please.
Okay. First, I want to thank you because I'm so glad that we chose you to do this role. We've learned a lot from your guidance and your input, and we've taken all this as a board very seriously, and we've taken the steps as you could see. We tried to implement the ones that weren't going to cost anything first and then tried to prioritize. So we weren't doing a budget shock to the voters. And I'm excited, the E-Team, it showed in the budget this year, the process. I'm just feeling so positive about where we are at with your report.
Thank you.
HR position is the next one I'm looking forward to. I think once that person's hired and has their transition time, then we'll look at the next steps once we're there. I did have one question for you in your experience on the retainabilities. Do you think housing plays, or lack of housing inventory, or, don't want to get in trouble with the affordability part of it, but has that, have you experienced that in the other communities that you've worked in other states?
I have.
Because it's not just a New Hampshire problem or a Hickoryville problem.
No, no, it's actually, the community I was in, that the average home is about 1.6 million right now. And so try and translate into public servants who can't afford to live in that community because of that. So it's really, it's astounding to me. Think of what it's like in Nantucket, which is about $2.8 million on average for home now. So it's becoming a huge problem. It's going to be, it's going to require discussion on a different level, providing housing on, you know, provided by the community for its public servants, even if it's just for, you know, a few days a week so that they can actually stay there, do their job, and then go home, wherever that might be, you know. So it's a challenge, it's a huge challenge. And I don't think there's any money that you could provide to make up that difference.
Right.
It's just more of a supply and demand issue, and also, you know, it's an interest rate issue as well. We're just not providing enough housing inventory for people to...
The housing inventory also affects the rent.
It does.
Prices, and we don't have a lot of stock in that either.
No.
So I just thought it was, I wanted to ask you.
No, it's a challenge.
And what you've been seeing, and I just think it's an important point to bring up, to consider.
All right, great, great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Selecting a chapter.
On that note, thank you for the housing conversation, select woman, Belanger. I was delighted to find out that someone I know who lives in town, has lived here for a while, joined the wastewater treatment team over the last few years. Is there any way we could do more of that? Recruit our actual citizens to consider working for the town, especially in water and sewer? It was a delight to find out, I won't name the individual because for privacy reasons, but it was a delight to find out that he had made that choice, and it made me realize, oh, maybe there are other folks that would like to make that choice and just aren't aware that those positions are available to our citizens.
Well, I'm a firm believer that public service is a calling, right? And if you have a calling for that level of work, then you'll do it. And I do believe in homegrown talent in many ways because they take pride in the community because they've grown up here their entire lives. So to the extent that you can do that, that's where you have to do that, is you have to get them young, where you have to get them in the high school or even pre-high school ages to get them interested in local service. The biggest challenge that I see in education right now is that there's no discussion of civics whatsoever. And I think that in of itself sort of leaves that door a little bit closed in terms of what people think for as a career. So I do think that needs to be addressed somehow. But I think reaching out to schools at a very young age will actually get folks interested. You know, when you do touch a truck or when you do fire department open houses and police department open houses, making those public appearances is huge because someday those kids will up and say, hey, I want to be one of those.
We need to do the same thing with our Public Works Department.
Yeah. Touch a truck is really a cool thing to do.
Yeah, that is a critical need. Thanks, I appreciate your response to that.
No problem.
Adult education, maybe the adult education program would be interested in.
I know, but that is such a good point, though, about making, sorry, making public service so accessible because, I mean, I know in my line of work, I'm always trying to recruit new folks and, you know, people, especially if they're starting out, they're sort of unicorns if they stay in a job for four years. It's like, you know, wow, you really, Doug. And I think we just have a different expectation. But I do think, I mean, I think that there's really something here about housing affordability and how that factors into how we set our pay scales, you know, and I think we've really taken this on in a real way. But, I mean, we have a crisis coming in, you know, certainly in New Hampshire, but in everywhere, if there is literally nowhere where people can afford to live. I had a meeting with a, you know, a national thought leader this weekend, and that was one of the big things that he said about, you know, New York and San Francisco and California in general, you know, there's just literally nowhere to live. And the restrictions are so disparate and localized that it's like, how do you, you know, how do you infiltrate, or not, I mean infiltrate is the wrong word, how do you serve on every zoning board or planning board and really, you know, sort of galvanize real change? But I do think that should be part of how we think about some of these issues and a more holistic approach. So it's not just, oh, Steve, you can't fill your DPW slots. It's like there is a problem that is larger than what you are able to fix at this time. And then the other, so I don't know if there's a question in there, just a, you know, synthesis of all of the things that I've heard, which are striking me as very important as we move into the future. And then I also just wanted to thank you for your use of photos of Exeter during your presentation. We have a beautiful town and I love, and I love seeing it. But I do think, you know, as all of these themes and bigger issues are super important to keep in mind as we are, you know, forging ahead and making a, you know, paving a new direction.
Yeah, I mean, not to, but the housing in and of itself is so complicated that even with zoning changes, ADUs being a lot, they cost some bit of money to build.
Sure.
So when you're talking $200,000 to build an ADU and someone having to pay that loan back, the rent for an ADU is still going to be in the 2,000-plus range.
That's exactly right.
Right? So it's, this is a long-term problem. This is, I, with all the things that I try to attend every webinar and get my hands on and listen to all these opinions, and there's no quick fix on the housing, so sorry.
Absolutely is not.
Yeah, it's complicated. It's going to take a lot of different things.
Thank you. Bill, thank you for the work that you've done over the last two years, and certainly this is a job, a report, a book, or whatever you want to call it, that is not collecting any dust. In fact, it hasn't hit the shelf, and I'm really glad that, you know, the board embraced your ideas. I want to thank the town manager and the E-Team for embracing these ideas because I do think that taking these initial steps that didn't cost any money, as you said, went a long way towards retaining some staff, recruiting some staff, and also looking at the organization as a whole. So we're excited to continue working with you in the next phase.
You know, it's equally important to note, too, that if you are an employee looking at this organization, it's always great to come to an organization that's working well, you know, and because that means a lot, too, you know. So I think you have to be able to say to folks that, you know, hey, our group gets along pretty well, we talk all the time, we get through things, we deal with some very difficult and challenging issues, but we find our way to get there, and that makes a difference in getting people to come here and finding these places and attractive places to come to.
Agreed, agreed.
So, all right.
Any other questions for Bill?
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you.
Look forward to seeing you soon.
My thanks as well, Bill.
Next on the agenda, we have an update on the Swayze Parkway Coastal Resiliency Project. We have Public Works Director Steve Cronin, as well as our Conservation and Sustainability Planner Kristin Murphy. Good evening to you both.
Thank you. So as you probably remember, back in July, we received notification that we were approved for a coastal resiliency grant with NHDES Coastal Program to do some climate resilience planning on Swayze Parkway. Since that time, we've been working with the folks over at DES to finalize our contract and scope of work for the project. Kristin reached out to the Coastal Zone Group just to confirm that the funding was still in place in light of some of the news that we've been hearing since the election. The contracts are in place with grant recipients. They have been approved by the governor and council, and the group, the Coastal Zone Group has received the funding and has it in hand. So at this point, we're comfortable moving forward with really the work on the project. What we're here for tonight is to request the board's participation in the process. We're going to start first with some stakeholder engagement training, which is a required component of the grant. So we're looking for someone from the board to participate in that, and also to be a team member for the project. So we put together in our scope of work what we thought would be a good project team for this that included a member of the select board, a member of the trustees, Kristin, myself, and a representative from the town manager's office to sort of guide the project and to help with the public outreach and engagement. So we're looking for a representative tonight from the board. I think the training right now is scheduled for March 26 in Portsmouth from 9:00 to 12:00. We'll be going before the trustees on Wednesday to ask them as well for a participant in the process.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You are our Swayze Park guy. Would you like to do this?
I am Swayze Park. What is the, what is the time that you're thinking of meeting? Have you got that far?
For, for routine meetings for the group, we haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay.
So, you know, we're still putting the team together, and at that point, I think we'll talk about, you know, potential meeting dates and frequency and things of that nature.
Okay.
I assume you're interested in doing this.
I mean, it makes sense if I'm working with the trustees.
Right, and I know, it would be harder for me, and I figured between the two of you, I...
I'm happy to do it if maybe you could step up as an alternate, if I...
If that works for the rest of the...
Does that work for the rest of the board?
I'm happy to back you up.
Okay, okay, all right.
But you were the instrumental in coming up with the solution, working with the...
Oh, no, no, no. This man came up with the solution, absolutely.
That'll all be part of it.
You're an instrumental part of the team, let me put it that way.
Yeah, we'll be evaluating the effectiveness as well of that as we go through this project and looking at how it's connected to sort of the long-term goals up there.
I'd be happy to back you up, but I'd love to see you do it.
Yeah, it is. It's harder for me to be here during the day, during the week, so I'm going to assume that's when those meetings are going to take place.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Great, that was easy.
Easy enough, thank you very much.
I'll see you Wednesday night.
Congratulations on the voting and getting...
Thank you.
I know the street sweeper missed it by just a few.
It did, yeah.
But everything else went, and the styrofoam, which I'm sure Dan is going to, is so excited about.
It's all good results. There's always one sacrificial lamb.
Yeah.
The street sweeper, if I have my way, the street sweeper will be back next year. I'm only one voice, but if I have my way, it'll be back.
Noticeable bump in morale right away from the contract, you know, there's, we have already, you know, word has gotten around, we've already started to see applicants trickle in. You know, one of those actually resulted in an interview today that went really well, so we're optimistic there. But, you know, I think, I think we're headed in the right direction, absolutely.
I'm so glad, I really am. Don't, glad you don't think that we've forgotten you or that you're not a priority to get you straightened out.
No, we really appreciate your support.
Your department staffed, yeah, yeah. And Conservation Commission, yay, they're going to be, right, so happy, well, the other one, but you know what I mean, with your, your efforts.
Thank you.
It's not conservation, what am I trying to say?
Sustainability.
Thank you. It's only Monday, and I can't seem to clear my brain. Yeah, so congratulations to your, those committees.
Did you want to mention the styrofoam recycling event?
Sure. So we worked with Guilford. They, as you can imagine, they have been overwhelmed with requests for styrofoam recycling around Earth Day. So they asked us to defer until April 26. We checked with Public Works, that works for the location and staff support. We lined up one transport vehicle. I'm hoping to set up an additional vehicle, possibly with funding that we have, and just announced it. So it's April 26 from 9:00 to 11:00 again at Public Works.
Yeah, the location changes time, right? Was the first one at Public Works, too?
Yeah.
Why was I thinking it was a transfer station? Okay.
It had great flow for traffic, you know, I think that it has accommodation to handle more traffic than we have. I've had a lot of communication from others with interest about it, other communities in fact, and so the Sustainability Advisory Committee, we need to really work through how to capitalize it as a great region.
And just let us know when you know how many volunteers you might need and how that's...
I think it's going to be busy.
I do, too. I really do.
Your first effort was crazy, right? Very busy, very successful.
I already have half a sack, half a garbage sack of styrofoam, so.
Yeah.
Been collecting it, finding it on the road sides, making sure it's a six, cleaning it, putting it in the sack.
Yeah, maybe XOTV can do a promotional thing for you.
Yeah, that would be great. There is information on the website if you're interested in looking it up before we get something produced. You just look up styrofoam recycling. I think it's even under latest news now, so information's out there if you want to know what sorts of materials you can bring in.
Yeah, this is, I'm so excited for this initiative. It's, I think it's wonderful, so.
Very cool.
We are, so other, I've been meeting with a regional group, the, its acronym is FRAG and Foam Recycling something or other, and a lot of regional entities that collect do some donations to cover the truck rentals. collect do some donations to cover the truck rentals. I spoke with Cory earlier today about the potential for the meeting with the Select Board in the future to pre-authorize a donation acceptance that covers the truck rental. So I hope to get on your agenda in the near future to get hopefully that lined up and ironed out to figure out the process.
Cory got that policy done in time. Great.
Coming back full circle, I'm glad to hear that morale is, is, is good, you know, post-election. And I, too, spoke with an individual in the Water and Sewer Department who just spoke of how excited they were to be part of the crew, spoke highly of Steve and his leadership. And so I think if we can start to look at folks that live nearby who could follow that example, because I haven't seen somebody so excited about their job in a long time. It's just great to see that. So kudos to you and your leadership team.
Yeah, been a great addition to the team. So we're happy to have.
Clean water and wastewater management is an amazing thing.
It is. Yep.
It is.
It's a baseline of civilization.
It's a miracle of turning on the tap and I'll never forget that.
You owe that one forever. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Stevens, our Finance Director, wants to talk about the use of water and sewer impact fees. Annual presentation?
Exciting topic.
Speaking of-
Just a, just a quick administrative thing. So every year, I come before you all and suggest that we use water sewer impact fees. In the current year, to offset principal payments of debt in the Water and Sewer Fund. So as of the end of 2024, the Water and Sewer Impact Bank accounts had $63,000 and $65,000 respectively, recommending we take an amount equal to the amount of fees collected back in 2023 and apply them towards the 2025 debt service. I usually just leave the, the last year in place and take from two years back just a policy that we've adopted. And that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Stevens?
No.
Then I would entertain a motion to transfer $57,075, which represents the amount of water and sewer impact fees collected in 2023, be transferred to the general fund operating account. And that breakdown is $18,007 from the water impact fee and $39,068 from the sewer impact fee.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the, the theme so far of our agenda this evening has been mostly upbeat and positive and celebratory. However, Mr. Dean, Mr. Dean's got some not-so-positive news he's going to share with us on the SB 297 update. Mr. Dean.
So we're going to talk about something that's outside of the control of this town?
Exactly. Well put.
So SB 297 impacts the Health Trust risk pool negatively. And unfortunately, it was filed as late legislation. It was the subject of a Senate Finance Committee hearing and a Senate Finance Committee Executive Session. There was a bill that came out and basically the bill as it stands now is reflective of the fact sheet that you have in front of you. So essentially, the bill would do three major things. One is that it would make the town ultimately responsible for losses that the Health Trust incurs. Also, it would mandate that we create a reserve fund to fund those losses. Actually, the reserve is up to 1% of our health care contributions each year until the reserve account is funded to a total of 4% of contribution. So that's, that's a mandatory fund. So basically, this legislation is saying that we can't participate in Health Trust health insurance without this reserve fund, which, as we know in our former government, we'd have to bring to the voters. We would have to get approval for it. And there's inherent issues with that and how that would work. So it creates a real particular, a real issue on that front.
Can you give us a ballpark as to what that liability would be?
Yeah, Cory worked out some numbers today on that front. And I'm thinking $100,000 is the 4% mark. 130. Thanks, Cory. Yeah, $130,000 for the 4% figure. So it's not an overwhelming dollar figure, per se, but it is overwhelming in a process way.
Right.
The fact that there's, again, risk inherent in this, we'd have to bring it to town meeting, get people to support it, explain it. It has a lot of, a lot of issues. We're going to have a meeting Thursday with our Health Trust Board of Directors to discuss this further. So the legislation will be up, up for discussion. And also, I just wanted to note, too, the third leg of the stool here, which is you must pay replenishments or assessments when needed. So you, as member groups, meaning the town, would utilize the funds created in Section 2 above to pay these costs. So we, any losses incurred at the Health Trust level, would, they'd come to the town and, and basically bill us for those, and we would be responsible for them. So problematic on a number of levels and late, late filed legislation.
What was the basis of it? Do you know?
The basis was there's been an ongoing dialogue, I'd call it, or an ongoing discussion about level of reserves with the Health Trust and with the regulator. And the regulator for this is the Secretary of State and-
That Division of Insurance?
For years, Health Trust has been trying to come under the Department of Insurance at the state level and has not been successful legislatively trying to get that to happen. It's a lot of, it's a lot of the Secretary of State's office, if you will, is reluctant to give up that.
So the Secretary of State's office is regulating-
An insurance-
An insurance company.
Correct.
Which I know is a nonprofit for municipal, but insurance company nonetheless, who presumably has reinsurance or some sort of stop-loss-
Yes.
-with their reserves. And the Secretary of State's keeping a stronghold on that when it really probably should be, I say Division of Insurance, but Department of Insurance.
Right. And we agree with that wholeheartedly, and the board has for years. But again, legislatively, every time legislation's been proposed to move Health Trust under the Department of Insurance, it's been rebuffed during the legislative process.
So there's a political angle to this.
The State's lobbied against it actively to not have it happen.
So there's a political angle to this. The Secretary of State doesn't want to give up, Secretary of State's office doesn't want to give up part of their fiefdom, probably. And they don't really understand how reinsurance pools work, probably.
That's a common opinion.
They don't have a sophisticated approach to that, whereas the insurance office for the state would bring a more sophisticated understanding to this and not foist these kinds of, that's just so frustrating.
Well, I also, I mean-
Thinking of things that are out of our control.
Yeah. Yes.
But this is politics.
And I think that this is probably in the vein of what is happening a lot in Concord these days, is there is no money. There is, the state has zero revenue. And all of the interest on our ARPA funds and all of the federal dollars that we used to have a rainy day fund are gone. And now I think what we're seeing is the majority party wanting to be able to say, we've cut all of these taxes and we've, without understanding, or without explaining that actually this just goes on to your local property taxes. And there is this huge disconnect between saying, I am supportive of local control, and then taking away the local control by doing things like foisting cost and taxes onto our backs without letting us have a say, because we are having a say, which is you should move this, the regulation piece of this. And we also, by the way, shouldn't be responsible for the state's portion.
There was a time in the state when the question of unfunded mandates, when they came up, would guide legislative decision-making. And that seems to have gone by the wayside. You have legislation nowadays like this that comes forward. Costs is going to cost, would cost, local taxpayers additional funds, but nobody talks about the unfunded mandate portion of it. And that's really too bad. Because again, that used to be a cornerstone. I remember NHMA meetings years ago when that, that was the first thing out of the gate. Whenever legislation was discussed, it, the, the question on the floor was, does this create an unfunded mandate? And doesn't that make it unconstitutional under our constitution? I, for whatever reason, that's ignored now. And that's really too bad. So, but that, that is, that happens time and again with legislation that we see that passes off cost to local municipalities to have to deal with. And this is another one of those efforts right here.
So they raised their art from just skedaddling out from under obligations they had made in the past to now heaping more obligations on us.
Absolutely.
And they, they being the state government in Concord.
Absolutely.
Incredible.
I watched some of that hearing as much as I could that day. The, and-
297.
I, yeah. I, there's so many bills, I can't even illustrate. But I, I was kind of horrified with the whole process. But to me, it just seemed like they were trying to fix a problem that doesn't exist. Yeah. To put it simply, I give credit to the two Health Trust people who were in that committee testifying because it was a difficult hearing to hear, listen to.
Yeah. That was Scott DeRosi, Executive Director-
Yeah, they were very good.
-and Gene Herrick, Legal Counselor, Health Trust, that did the testifying.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any assist the organization can get on this is obviously welcome from local elected officials. Senator Al Chiller, you know, she's just a phone call away and can be talked to about this.
Is there like a sign-on letter that you want to propose or could you send around to local communities?
That is something I can bring up on Thursday at the board meeting, for sure, and see if there's enough interest to do that. I know-
Good.
I know this has definitely raised the, raised the antenna of Hampton through Sarah Trahan, who sits on the board. She's a teacher at the, at Winnicott High School, social studies teacher, who's very concerned from the personnel perspective, from the employee perspective, obviously, with what can happen to health insurance as a result of this kind of legislation.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I think it would be really powerful to have, you know, and this is sort of what I was talking about during our goal-setting piece, was to have the town of Exeter really leading on, on work that is going to both impact us and because we have, you know, there are so many towns who do not have the kind of staff and capacity that we do. How can we, you know, use our talent and our collective, you know, consistent agreement about some of these unfunded mandates and some of these opportunities to have, you know, sign-on letters? Because I think, I think that they do make a difference. I know it's hard to go and, I mean, it's certainly hard for me to go and testify in Concord against some of these things. But I am really happy or would, you know, love to make a motion to write a letter supporting the Health Trust position, because I think it's really important for the town to take a stand.
I'd second that motion.
Yep. Agreed.
I know. And it's just, I will remind everybody again what Governor Ayotte said during her budget address about how the, she's tightening her belt and she expects local elected officials to also tighten our belts. And to that, I say, how do you expect that when all of these unfunded mandates are coming our way without listening to us? Or, you know, I mean, the, the elected leaders in Concord are thumbing their nose at what local communities want to do.
We have very responsible budgets, year after year here, and we know how to adjust them. We need to. But when we're getting the state mandates down to on top of it, that, that's-
Well, and it's just, it's just a lie of like, we're, you know, we're being fiscally responsible in Concord while also passing on all of these things. It's just not true. And it's infuriating to be lectured at and-
No, it's incredibly cynical.
Yeah.
And political.
Just in general.
So that, was that a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
And a second.
And I did second it.
So we'll do a letter? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Mr. Dean, thank you. I just had one other question. Presuming there are other alternatives to the Health Trust, are they, do they also fall under the Secretary of State or are they regulated by the Department of Insurance?
They are regulated by the Secretary of State.
Okay. So it's across the board?
Yeah. For the three, there are three entities. The Health Trust is the largest by far. And then there is School Care and the New Hampshire Insurance Trust, the NHIT. So there's three organizations that provide insurance.
So it's across the board, where Secretary of State's office?
Across the board with the Secretary of State.
So if it's, if it's public insurance, so a public entity that is creating the insurance pool, the Secretary of State has responsibility for it, not the Insurance Commissioner?
Correct.
That's incredible.
Bananas. That-
So stupid. Sorry. Sorry to use such a short staccato word, but it is stupid.
They won't be happy until-
Suppressing the vote and passing unfunded mandates. Sounds great.
Until our communities are uninsured, self-assumed.
Right. And then how are we supposed to find anybody to work here? Okay. All right.
We could just keep going on and on about this.
I'm moving on. We're moving on. Thank you for your update, Russ.
So we'll do that letter and you'll keep us updated.
I will.
All right.
Yeah.
And anything else we can do, right, let us know.
Absolutely. Will do.
All right.
Thank you.
So the last thing we're going to take up under action items is the Select Board Committee Appointments. And I've got a couple of different sheets. I think this is the most accurate, though. There is one error still, I think. I can go through all of these. I know when I spoke with Selectwoman Gilman earlier today, she was happy to stay with what she already has. Or, does anybody, does anybody wish to make any changes?
There is one correction that we need to make. The, the new sheet reflects the fact that Selectwoman Belanger allowed me to step forward to be the Conservation Commission Rep a year ago. So that, that correction happened.
But it doesn't have me as your second.
Right. You, you, you did agree to be the alternate, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other, I'm listed as an alternate for Water Sewer Advisory.
I think he's a full-
No, you're, you're a full, there's two full voting votes.
Right.
Correct.
Voted to have two Select Board members on-
Oh, I didn't catch that one.
-Water Sewer Advisory.
Yep.
We're hanging on to those members for dear life.
Yeah.
We want to have our quorums.
Totally didn't catch that one. Okay.
I'm perfectly happy to continue to serve as I have been serving in terms of liaising with our volunteer committees, commissions and-
I'm fine with my assignments.
You're fine with your assignments?
I am fine as well. I have had trouble making the tax exemption and credit advisory committee time work with my, my schedule, but I still am very interested, as you probably can all hear in my voice, very interested.
So you're going to keep that?
I'll, yes.
Yeah. Just let Julie know when you can.
Yeah.
Yeah. And everything else is straightforward.
When does that tax exemption?
Wednesday night is the next meeting.
Televised?
We'll have a camera down there, hopefully.
No, okay. No, I was just thinking, because it's, it's so important. And if Molly can't make it and something happens and Julie can't, but if it's televised, you can do it.
The last one was on.
Julie can, okay. That's it. Sorry.
Well, do you want? I mean, I just, it's so hard. Night meetings are so hard.
Uh, Wednesday night at 6:30.
I don't want to do it.
In the Wheelwright Room.
Sorry. I class at church at night. And I really, I, I can-
No, 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 no. It's totally fine.
What if, um-
It's very hard.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Because I know that Selectwoman Gilman is stretched because of her service in Concord. What if we, you spoke to her about switching the alternate to you for that committee?
For the?
For the tax exemption committee. Are you interested in being the al-
Well, I think Julie is-
Julie's interested.
Interested. Yeah.
But she's also stretched.
Well, let's pick it up again.
Let's ask, yeah, I feel more comfortable asking her.
We should just, we should have a Select Board member.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was trying to go for there. But yes. And you know what? If, if something happens, I will step up.
And I very definitely know that I do not want to serve on that committee because I am way too passionate about that issue. I cannot be dispassionate.
Do you need a motion on these or are you?
Can we table it?
Uh, no, we don't need a motion.
What I was going to suggest is if we, if we could make the corrections, which is adding Selectwoman Belanger as the alternate to Concom.
Which it is on the website.
Changing Selectwoman Chartran as a Select Board Rep. There are two on the Water Sewer. And we can keep, since we don't have to make a motion, let's keep the Tax Exemption and Credit Advisory Committee as is until the next meeting. And then we can ask Selectwoman Gilman if she'd like to remain the alternate with the understanding that she may have to go to some of the meetings because of Selectwoman Cowan's schedule.
Oh, sorry.
Does that work?
Yeah, that works fine. I- Yeah, that works fine. I'd add too that Julie's been a great addition to just being a presence at the committee meetings. Uh, she brings a lot of the legislation from Concord to the meetings.
So it is important.
It is, yeah, it's super, yes, it is super helpful.
So.
I was just thinking about how, how committed she is to her service in Concord.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll ask her.
She's making it happen.
And this is why, one of the reasons I like this board. We all look out for each other and make sure the town is covered respectfully. Isn't that?
She's very busy in Concord as well.
I wanted to throw that out there.
No, no doubt about it. In municipal and county, there have been so many bills this year that she's had to deal with. We haven't talked about a lot of the SB two bills, but there are five or six of them that are in the pipeline that Julie's been active on and has been working to make sure that our interests are protected under things like the default budget, operating budget, SB two, you name it. There are bills year after year that, that she's dealing with, so. And this year is no different, same thing. And we may be talking about that in a few weeks or another subsequent meeting here. For letters of support or.
Why do I have a feeling Concord's going to absorb a lot of our time this year? Sorry. Okay.
Madam Clerk, if I may.
Oh, my God, that sounds so funny.
If, we have Mr. Bisson, who's been hanging here on Zoom. If we could jump to his permit and then we'll go back to the abatements and credits, if you're okay with that?
Absolutely.
Mr. Bisson, are you there?
I am, Mr. Chair, and I am alone in the room.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry I could not be with you tonight. A little under the weather, but I'm on the mend.
I'm glad.
Exciting time approaching us, obviously, with the snow melting fastly. Spring has arrived, knock on wood, marking the final phase of replacing Planet Playground. The renovations encompass much more than just the playground equipment, as you can see in the memo before you. Demolition, fencing, paving and landscaping for effective site renovation to complete the project. We released RFPs early February with submission deadline of the seventh. The RFPs were available on various platforms, DOT, and targeted emails to area vendors as well. It was a great response and all, as you can see, and we'll go down this if you bear with me. Demolition of it obviously is going to be one of the heart-wrenching things that we have to do to prepare the site. I, we're going to go in systematically salvage all the pickets for all those past donors that will be, they'll be available for them to, to keep as a memento. The plaques from all the, the larger donations for the different elements, artwork we're going to reuse and as well as the two kiosks, it's not listed in here, but the two kiosks at the front, we're going to kind of retrofit as a retrospective of past Planet Playground and future Planet Playground, but we'll, we'll, we'll get more into that later. This event, a final send-off is scheduled, and you are all cordially invited to April 12th with the rain date of the 19th, following our egg hunt. And at that time, and I will be back to you guys on March 31st to roll out a BRIC program that we will like to institute for those families that may want to have their legacy left with Planet Playground. We're still working on those final details, so I apologize. It was something we came up when we met with Assistant Town Manager Melissa Roy and David Tovey, and we think it's a good opportunity. But after further, we got five bids for demo. And we are recommending BWP and Sons excavation out of North Hampton for $10,400. This was a great price because previously we were quoted in the, the eighteen to twenty thousand dollar range. So to have someone come in so low was outstanding for us, so that gives us some wiggle room. And then next, we did an RFP for fencing. That one, we had seven companies select a bid, or submit bids. We are recommending going with AAA fencing out of Dover, New Hampshire, to not exceed the cost. And obviously, Mr. Chair, you can read all these motions when we get to that point. AAA fencing has been a staple in the extra areas while doing various projects for the town. Next was paving. Accessibility is one of the most important portions of the Planet Playground renovation. Obviously, if anyone's walked up that pathway, it is deteriorating, has been deteriorating for a number of years. So this is an opportunity to rectify that and widen it to five feet. We only got two bids for this one, but MWS paving out of Hampton, New Hampshire, came in at $6,250, so we're thrilled with that. And lastly, landscape and renovations, and this one, I'll, I'll explain, Mr. Chair, of why we are actually recommending a higher one than the basic one. We feel that the Planet Playground is, is really the gateway to the recreation park. So when we put back this outstanding accessible playground, having the opportunity to clean up the, the area around it and make it really look like it's, it's going to be a centerpiece for that, that park for years to come. But a number of challenges we've experienced since taking down the Hazard Trees last year, as you remember, lack of grass, dusty, this is going to rectify all that. We're going to actually plant grass, have irrigation to keep the grass green, because obviously there's heavy sun, heavy foot traffic. So we want something to be able to replace the grass as it goes out. And then also installing garden beds and trees. The garden beds will have a number of plants, and you'll see later on that, that will be another expenditure out of what we have. But the plants will be specifically targeted to deter mosquitoes. Obviously, every fall, we have the, the triple E and the other different things that we're worrying about. So we just kind of come up with something that is attractive but also purposeful. So Daze Landscaping for $12,350 out of Salisbury, Massachusetts submitted a bid. Reason we are going with them, if you look throughout the memo, Summit Contracting out of Vermont, that submitted for all four of these different subcontractors. Obviously, they're not coming down from Vermont to do a irrigation system, so they have decided to not seek this bid. So.
Bless you.
That will leave us approximately, after all these bids, the total for the project so far is $5,780.53, $53.50, leaving approximately $16,946.50 from both sources, the Land and Water Conservation Fund and the Warren Article from last year. And this will go to making sure if there's anything that, when we do the demo, if there's a unforeseen problem, we can rectify that, but also to purchase our plants, trees, tables and benches and other site amenities if we deem that they're worthy. So that is, in a nutshell, Mr. Chair, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bisson? That was a pretty thorough report on your memo.
No questions.
Pretty thorough.
Okay. Greg, by my count, I have four motions?
Yes, you do, sir.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to authorize the Parks and Recreation Department to contract with BWP and Sons excavation for an amount not to exceed $10,400 for the demolition of the old Planet Playground.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries four zero. I would entertain a motion to authorize the Parks and Recreation Department to contract with AAA fencing for an amount not to exceed $18,646 for the fencing for the new Planet Playground.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries four zero. I would entertain a motion to authorize the Parks and Recreation Department to contract with MWS paving for an amount not to exceed $6,250 for the paving of the new Planet Playground.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries four zero. And finally, I'd entertain a motion to authorize the Parks and Recreation Department to contract with Daze Landscaping for an amount not to exceed $12,350 for the landscaping restoration irrigation of the new Planet Playground.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries four zero. Thank you, Greg. I hope you feel better.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, Madam Clerk, back to you.
Oh, I was filling with Julie tonight. Here we go. Okay, so bear with me. I'm going to try to group a few of these.
Okay.
Okay, for elderly exemptions, MAP 87, Lot 14, Unit 8A. MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 955. And MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 322, in the amounts of $152, I'm sorry, $152,251 each for the tax year 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries four zero.
And MAP 103, Lot 13, Unit 33, in the amount of $236,251 for the tax year 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries four zero.
Next is a disability exemption, MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 47, in the amount of $125,000 for tax year 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries four zero.
Veteran credit, MAP 99, Lot 9, in the amount of $2,000 for tax year 2025.
Second.
It's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Abatements. I'm going to start with the two denied, just to get those. So MAP 32, Lot 12, Unit 1, and MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 209, both denied for the tax year 2024.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
MAP 47, Lot 8, Unit 3243, in the amount of $485.67 for the tax year 2024.
I'll second that abatement.
It's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
MAP 64, Lot 24, in the amount of $71.16 for the tax year 2024.
I'll second that abatement.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
MAP 73, Lot 280, in the amount of $136.98 for the tax year 2024.
And I'll second that abatement.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
MAP 79, Lot 22, in the amount of $106.74 for the tax year 2024.
I'll second that abatement.
It's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
MAP 87, Lot 3, Unit 14, in the amount of $112.08 for the tax year 2024.
I'll second that abatement.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
MAP 94, Lot 22, in the amount of $305.99 for the tax year 2024.
I'll second that abatement.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
MAP 96, Lot 2, Unit 7, in the amount of $247.28 for the tax year 2024.
And I'll second that abatement.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
MAP 87.
Excuse me.
Lot 34, in the amount of $1,755.87 in the amount of, for the tax year 2024.
Did you say eighty-seven or ninety-seven?
I said, did I say eighty-seven?
I think you said eighty-four.
All right, let me redo that one. I move for the abatement of MAP 97, Lot 34, in the amount of $1,755.87 for the tax year 2024.
And I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
And I have one more. It's a religious exemption for MAP 69, Lot 3, Unit 13, in the amount of $585,200 for the tax year 2025.
Can I ask you a question? I'll second for discussion. Is this a new religious exemption?
It is, and you know, I started looking for it because I wondered about it.
Could we hold up on this?
Yeah, I'm going to withdraw that. I'm going to withdraw that motion for now.
And I'll withdraw my second, just so I can review the paperwork before I vote.
So Joanna, the motion has been withdrawn, the second has been withdrawn. Mr. Dean will take this up on further investigation.
And no swing at whoever it is. I don't even know who it is. It's just, it's a lot of money and I like to review things.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Well done. Mr. Dean?
Okay, so report to the board that Thursday, we are having a virtual meeting with CSX, the train company, on track upgrades in Exeter. So they'll be doing some at-crossing upgrades across town in April and May. And we're working to coordinate that with our public safety departments and public works departments. So we'll be on a call on Thursday to talk about that, and I'll report back more when we know more in terms of the logistics. I will tell you that the first time we, they swung through with this request that they planned on doing all the work at all the crossings all at once.
Okay.
And we rebuffed that and said that we need it staggered over a course of time. So we don't have the obvious traffic circulation issues that would occur if, they're going to occur anyway, but we don't want them to occur all at once in four places, five places. So that meeting is Thursday. I mentioned the health trust meeting coming up on Thursday as well. I can't remember if I mentioned it during budget, but we are working through HR right now to put together the Human Resources Director posting and advertisement, and also the Senior Coordinator posting an advertisement. We will be working with the Economic Development Director to create some office space downstairs. So we've been working on that the last couple of days as far as planning that out. It's going to require building a wall in that, in that area and bringing the Economic Development Director forward to that portion of the office. So that is the, the plan we have in mind for the new HR Director position.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Will the HR Director be there or where Christina currently is?
No, it will be, it would be where Darren currently is.
Okay.
Where he sits at his desk.
Yeah, small private office that opens up into the HR with Christina.
So the whole private part of that is, the wall will be such that it's not soundproof, but it's soundproof.
As close as we can make it.
All right, great, thank you.
So. Probably a larger discussion down the line when Parks and Rec moves to Ten Hampton Road about how we look at the town offices and should we look at some different alternatives once, when some space opens up in other places.
Understood.
So I had an email exchange with Bob Kelly of Water Sewer today, talking about sewer rates. So we're going to actually take up a, an internal meeting to start with Cory Stevens and Assistant Town Manager, myself and Bob, to review sewer rates because our fund balance is, right now, it's about six million in sewer. So we want to look at that. We have a septic facility coming online that's going to be another revenue source for us. So I think it's just time to take a look at those rates and, and see, you know, with the E-Team and see what we want to make for a recommendation with Bob.
Okay.
So we have that meeting coming up on the 25th. Rain's Barn work is recommencing, so just for those of you who pay attention to that project, that's coming up and the contractors going back to work. They did some insulation of windows or installation of windows over the, over the wintertime, and they're going to be working on that in the spring. So we're, we're finally going to see that project start to come to a finish, and that's good news. And I have a meeting tomorrow with Mark Leighton from PEA to talk about the groundwater easement. So I'll be over there at Facilities at nine o'clock in the morning, talking to him. The Kalia accreditation, the Chief and Deputy Chief are out in California at that this week. Devin West is filling in admirably for both of them with Steve Bolduc, one of our lieutenants. And Devin just got his MPA degree, so congratulations to him on that one. And they'll be back next week, hopefully, with good news from their, their trip to California. The Fire Chief and I met this morning to talk about a proposed ALS agreement between the town and several of the other, all the other towns that have participated in that new coalition. Both the Chief and I feel at this time that it's probably not in the town's interest to sign on to a contract for that. The reason being, there are some, it's a really detailed contract that involves setting up a budget. And we know the first two years of that service, the ALS service, is being funded by donations and grants. And so we're just going slowly. It's not that we don't want to be a partner in the process, but to sign on to an intermunicipal agreement to sort of commit ourselves to any level, the feeling is after a discussion this morning that we're not ready to do that. But if the Board wants to hear more from the Chief, we can certainly put that on a future agenda. So just let us know. And then I attended a Housing Advisory Meeting last Friday with Nancy and the group. And we had a very good discussion about all the different legislative initiatives that are before the, before the legislature right now in terms of housing. There's a lot of them. Just for transparency sake, I want to tell the Board, or say to the Board tonight and, and the public, we do have accounts with TD Bank, you read that. They're closing four banks, there was, there were some penalties.
Four branches.
Four branches, yes, four branches. And there were some penalties imposed on them. We've had a relationship with them financially for, for several years. They have provided us good service. I think if the Finance Director were here, he'd echo that. Just wanted to put that out there and let, let, make sure you knew that that was, that was part of our financial administration. And then Drinkwater Road, we're working on an issue for no parking signs. A resident wrote a lengthy letter about two weeks ago regarding that situation. We've been working with staff on that and will come to, with a recommendation to the Board, probably at your meeting on the 31st, to, to post that road, no parking on both sides. We have a site walk on Wednesday to, to meet with the property owner, one of the property owners down there. But I drove the road this weekend and I can tell you that there were like five, at least five to seven joggers jogging on Drinkwater. And Drinkwater does not have like wide shoulders that are paved. So it's definitely an issue to, to talk about. But it would take three readings of an ordinance change to make that happen. So we plan on bringing you Drinkwater Road. And also there are a couple of places that we've not put signage out that we need to, that we need to codify in our parking regulations. So we'll bring those to you too. One of them is Swayze Parkway. One of them is Watson Road, where there's conservation land, where people love to use that conservation land up on Watson Road. So we'll be looking to add those to the parking regulations so they can be properly enforced.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we going to see the, I didn't see a letter, a recent letter on Drinkwater. Are we going to do that in the packet?
I can get you.
Thank you. Thank you.
That letter came to me. That letter came directly to me and I gave it to Mr. Dean.
Okay.
And we've been addressing it and.
Okay.
There's a reason, there's, no, I know there's a reason it wasn't in the packet. It's a word.
So it won't be in the packet? Oh, okay. I, I just, it helps to make decisions.
No, I understand that.
I think so.
Everything, all of the relative information will be available to the Board when he, when he comes back on the 31st.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on, I had a meeting with the Library Director on Monday of last week. Went very well. She was very appreciative of being able to meet and talk. She also joined our Ops Meeting last Friday.
This is our new library?
This is our new Library Director, Julia Lantner. So we had a very good conversation about Board-Library relations. And she has invited the Board to attend any meetings of the trustees that you feel you would like to go. She opened the door to having staff attend them too. And we talked about the idea of maybe bringing her and a few of the trustees in, or all of them, if they want to, to have a meeting with the Board at a future meeting to talk about just Board-Library relations and how things are going and keep each other updated and that sort of thing. She seemed very amenable to that.
Good.
Hopefully some good, good things will come out of that. I was able to tour Lent last, on March 5th. Lent is actually asking us for an increased capacity for sewer discharge. We had some conversations with them about that. So you may hear more about that in the not-too-distant future. There's a current agreement that covers the Stratum Industrial Park that was signed years ago that gave 75,000 gallons of capacity to the park. And Lent has been one of those users in the park that's utilized capacity, but that capacity, they've outgrown it. So they're having to work with the other members of the park that are members of that agreement. But they've also made, excuse me, they've also made overtures to the town directly. If there's a way to enhance their sewer discharge with us, would we be willing to entertain that? So that's something to, to think about. And we can, you know, as we work through that process a little bit more, we'll likely come to you when the time is right with, with anything that we may recommend.
Is Lent one of the originals in that park?
That's a great question. I, I'm not sure.
I remember it was Celestica, whatever, right? I think they were, I think they're in their years.
But their consumption has grown considerably and discharge.
Quick question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Are they a water customer or just a sewer customer?
Yes, water and sewer.
But they're not looking for an increase in water?
They are as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I'm thinking about our conversation that we had.
Right.
During your Town Manager's report at the last meeting.
Correct.
But they're an existing customer.
Existing customer, yeah.
And they, they are both water and sewer?
Both water and sewer.
Okay.
Yeah. So more to come on that, when the ball is in their court right now to work with their, their people in Switzerland and get back with us with, with some ideas about what they might want to do with the town. The Webster Avenue Pump Station Project is underway again, so that's work that's being done. They're mobilizing and beginning work back on that project on the Force Main that goes with that project. So be seeing action there. West Side Drive Project is about to go out to bid. We're working on finalizing a few easements for that project, but it should be out to bid early April. So that's good news on that project. The, a quick report, the Taxi Ticket Program has gone away. The one that you may have known about, that was the two-for-one. Spend a dollar to get $2 worth of taxi tickets. That has actually gone away because Academy Taxi has gone away. So there's no taxi service in town that could actually pick up the program. So I know David Tovey has been very good about working with entities for senior transportation and other methods and trying to figure that out. But that's a program, that was out of our control, just the Academy Taxi went out.
That was the only taxi service in town?
Yeah, I believe so, yes. Yeah, so. So it's Uber or, or nothing, I guess, for now, unless somebody else steps forward. And then there's a Boutique Hotel Project that's before the Zoning Board tomorrow night at Blue Ribbon Cleaners, the site at Blue Ribbon. So just if you're interested in that. There's Pizza with the Police on March 19th at New England Pizza. So that's coming up this week. So if you're interested in that. And then Steve Bailey and his team have been interviewing IT tech candidates. So we're looking to fill that position with Andy Swanson's retirement, which I'll mention again was a great retirement party and, and good send-off for Andy on March 7th, so.
And congratulations to Mr. Bailey.
Yeah, and congratulations to Steve for taking the reins and had a busy first week and things in IT are, are moving ahead. And I was able to have lunch with Andy today too. So it was actually a double, double hit on that one. So doing well in IT. Then GIS Coordinator interviews are occurring, they're continuing. And we have a couple of good candidates for that, so we hope to be able to fill that position fairly soon. And then the confirmation that the E911 Meeting for the meeting place is going to be April 14th. So if the Board can put that on your calendars, that's when we will take up again the issue of renaming the meeting place, renumbering the meeting place.
Can you put, can you say that date again?
April 14.
April 14.
And that's a Select Board meeting?
That's a Select Board meeting and we are reaching out. I've sent an email out on that to the most active resident who was here that night about informing others about it. And we've, we're working through a process because Avesta is the owner of the property, has certain things that they want to see as far as notice or agreement. And, but we're doing our very best to notify everybody over there.
I appreciate you doing that because when they were here, we told them that we would let them know in addition to the property manager. And I know when we met with the E-Team last week, we did make that promise. So I asked Mr. Dean to do his best to try to reach out to the members.
It's a, it's a group of folks that have some special requirements and we need to really bend for them with this process more than we have in the past. So I, we'll need to see that kind of support for those folks. This is not like other 911 processes we've done in the past with address changes. There's some special requirements that they need and I really want to see us support them.
And we are aware of that. And I think when the time comes and we have the hearing, you'll hear from our staff what kinds of resources they have marshaled to assist this process if the Board is in agreement. So you, you know that that's coming as part of that process.
How are we going to notify them? What's going to be the process because that's private property, right?
It is.
So are we mailing out notices? Or is somebody going to be able to go knock on doors or, or put notices or?
We're, we're not doing that. We've been relying on somebody that.
That, the woman who was here, that's head of the group?
Yes.
Okay. The sooner the better.
Yeah, it's already out.
Okay.
It'll be talked about this, so we can.
Okay. So, all right, I just.
No, that's because she's, you know.
We can't rely on letters.
She's reached out to me periodically and we've communicated and we gave them our word that staff would notify them directly in addition to what our responsibilities are. And I, I have to, Mr. Dean, emphasize what Selectwoman Belanger and Selectman Shartran are saying, that I know staff will do what we need to do as required, but I think we need to do a little bit more in good faith with, with these folks, so. And I know we will.
So that was a long report, but that is all I had for tonight.
I, I have a question about something that you did not talk about.
Okay.
I'm looking at the outstanding and potential projects with federal grant funding. And I appreciate that this is here again.
Yes.
It occurs to me that we should approach Unitil about picking up the pace on the solar array. The last piece of the puzzle there for completion is theirs. And with the situation being what it is, they should understand why we need that done sooner rather than later. So could we reach out to them?
Yes, we can, we can do that.
We've sat back and waited for quite a while, but I'm no longer in that mode in my mind and I'm asking us to be a little more aggressive.
Yes, I think it's very important, Dan, extremely important what Dan just suggested.
We do, we do have a contact.
I was going to say, I think Dave's already reached out.
Yeah, we do, we do have a contact. But again, that's something that if the Board wants to see.
Is it in writing or is it just like a letter? If it's not in writing yet, it should be.
Which part?
To reach out and ask them what the status is and that we're imploring them to.
Yeah, we'll check into that whether we, whether we've sent them any formal correspondence.
My understanding is there's some equipment that's on back order.
There is. A meter.
If being the close friends and partners that they are to this town, if they could put a little extra grease on that, that would be awesome. And they should understand why we need them to put a little extra grease on that.
We have, we've, I will say that we've certainly been asking them on a pretty regular basis to pick up, like you said, pick up the pace and.
We need to bring that online.
What can we do? Because it's ready to go.
And do they understand what's at stake? We really want to get this, I, I just, I don't know, I'm not part of your conversation.
We need a favor from our friends and partners.
We need to make sure they know.
I think they do. I think they think it's a supply line issue and, like I said, we'll get, we'll reach out and get back.
There's got to be some give on that.
I think that there's solar arrays all over the country that try to, to get this grant. And so it's a, it's a highly sought-after piece of equipment, not just local.
Okay.
So it doesn't mean we can't do all the things we're saying.
Yes.
Well, look.
Thank you.
Well, you can update us on the 31st as to the progress Mr. Sharple's has made.
Sure.
And if, if you need a motion from this Board, I'm sure we'd be happy to make a motion imploring our friends and partners at Unitil.
Fair enough.
To do what they can to bring that project online, given the circumstances. Thank you for hearing me out on that.
So the, and so by the 31st or whatever that date would be, we should hopefully have an update of these, one, two, three, four, five, six. No. What was I saying?
There are five in both.
There are five, yeah, that we might have more information on by then.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll keep that on the front burner.
Any other questions for Mr. Dean? Select Board Committee reports, Selectwoman Belanger, please.
Okay. I kept thinking of adding things, sorry. So I had a Planning Board meeting, March 13th. We have two ongoing applicants, 248, which is Green and Company, for the Munn Project that's off of Haven Lane and Phase Two off of Portsmouth Ave. There were several questions that I'm bringing to the Board as a heads up. Traffic study was discussed and there was an alternative to having the applicant have a traffic study done. And instead of securing that cost, there's conversation between our town planner and the applicant to, I don't know what the right term is, similar to what happened when Riverwood set aside money.
An exaction.
An exaction, that's it, thank you, to the rescue. To try to see, to, to invest in sinking the lights at Alumni Drive and Green Hill Road. Because there seems to be, that seems to be part of the problem with backing up on Portsmouth Ave. And it might extend to the Portsmouth Ave High Street-Water Street intersection because we do have a problem there. That's ongoing, that's not what I'm giving you a heads up about. What, the other part is this. It's been determined, I guess is the right word, that there's some, some issues with that neighborhood, the Haven Lane neighborhood. Some of it, the accidents, the speeding, that's something our police chief is going to have to address. But there are, we're missing some crosswalks, I'm sorry, we're missing some stop signs. We might well look at some intersections, especially in the Green Hill-Bonnie Drive area. Because it's pretty clear that we have some issues in that neighborhood. So that's, we'll not follow the applicant if that project is approved. But I, listening to the neighborhood, we really would probably want to take a look at this. What is likely coming before us if that gets approved? One of the abotters is looking for the Select Board to consider changing the times that construction can happen. Right now, it's 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And when that, it's the second time that particular husband or wife of butter brought that up, they did mention both times that they were going to come to the Select Board. What Mr. Sharple's suggested is if we're going to look at it, not to look at it as an individual project, but as, as reevaluating the ordinance.
Yeah.
So I did want to give everyone a heads up that that's more likely than not heading our way and gives you some time to think about it. Yeah, and then there was some line of sight issues also. One of the other things that was discussed was the road in some areas in that neighborhood, especially I think it was Haven Lane. Some of the roads are wider than we require, but some of those roads also don't have sidewalks. I think there are very few sidewalks in that neighborhood. I'm looking at Dan, I know he wants to stay out of that whole conversation. So anyway, that's something that we.
That's not true.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you did.
No, I mean, whether there should be sidewalks in J.D. Hill or not, I have a very definite opinion.
Okay, no, are there, no, I'm asking you, I'm sorry. Are there many sidewalks in your neighborhood? I drive through.
There are some.
I don't look down, I'm, I'm paying attention because it is a little tough in that neighborhood. So there are some, I thought so, thank you. It's been years since I've walked that neighborhood. Okay. Okay, uh, let's see. Also with Portsmouth Ave, there was just some discussion about when that starts, that comes up on the CIP, which is in a few years, that a corridor study would also be done on that. So that would probably take care of any traffic concerns. But the, the traffic study people said that it's, it's not an issue with this particular project. Okay. And then we had the 112 Front Street, that discussion continues. That's the Stone Ark development. And both have been tables again until March 27th. So due be continued.
Terrific.
Housing, sorry, one more. Housing Advisory Committee, March 14th, the next morning. We had a few discussions. One was a very long. One was a very long summary of the bills currently in Concord. I am not going to go through them all because we'd be here till midnight. However, Mr. Sharple did talk about some of the zoning. And it was amazing listening to him talk through them and how they may or may not affect Exeter and how some of them are redundant, the redundancies in them. So Mr. Sharple was talking about the possibility of people going to Concord to testify. Yay, Molly. And that, I think you were there, he'd be interested if guided to address certain ones. So I think more than ever, Molly's made this comment several times. We're going to have to see what we can do about getting people to Concord to testify. I don't know how that's going to look. I wish I could do it. I have a day job. It's very difficult for me to get to Concord during the week. I can get webinars in, but only because I'm sitting at my desk. So there was that. We discussed short-term rentals. That passed. The zoning, a mammoth pass. So we talked about ways of collecting data so we can, down the road, see what that data tells us. One of the things that we had learned when we were looking at the data when the Housing Advisory Committee started was we had no data collected on what is now called an ADU, but in my younger days was called an in-law apartment. We didn't even know how many we had. So that's for a future discussion, but we did touch on that. So right now, that would be for mostly data collecting. And we talked about local government options and how that might affect in the future if the town ever wanted to consider something different than the way we do things now. We talked about the history of the, I think, two attempts?
Yeah, two different charter conversations that have been--
Just because of how slow sometimes it is to be able to react. Siphon project, for example, we had to go to a special vote. This is in no way to take anybody's votes away. It was just a discussion on how we might be able to do things better, quicker. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Selectwoman Cowan?
Yes, well, we have at least one of the same committee reports, but the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee met on last Wednesday. What was that date?
The 12th.
Yes, the 12th. And we heard a number of abatements, including a request to to address a water quality issue from a specific neighborhood. We were all sort of in agreement. We made sure that all of the residents who came before us, we had a discussion about what was before us and moved forward with the agreement that once the full neighborhood has been addressed, Bob Kelly, who chairs the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, will come to the Select Board as the Water Commissioners of the Town of Exeter for a formal vote to finalize that process.
And this was a problem with some equipment on the town side.
Yes.
And it was affecting the water quality in a particular neighborhood. And we want to make sure we have as many people there involved as were affected that choose to be involved and create a one-off solution that will not be duplicated for anyone else. Because this was a specific piece of equipment that failed.
Yep. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you for that report. I will not include that in mine. I did miss, or there was a Sustainability Advisory Committee meeting that was canceled for lack of a quorum in the first week of March. I attended Andy Swanson's retirement on Friday, the 7th. I was working at the polls all day on the 11th, so I missed the Conservation Commission meeting on the evening of the 11th. And Molly just gave a report on the Water and Sewer Advisory Commission. That is my Select Board report.
All my meetings are later this week, although I also attended Andy Swanson's retirement party. And I know Selectwoman Belanger was one of the many employees and staff and elected officials and business owners and people who are involved in the community who are invited to read at Main Street School--
Oh, that was so much fun. I started that, and you're right, thank you.
And as I said, I know you were there. I know Detective Page did a couple of readings. Jason Fritz from the Fire Department, a bunch of other community leaders. I spoke at length with the librarian at Main Street School, who's relatively new to me since my kids were there, but just full of energy and really enthusiastic about how many community leaders took shifts to come and read. It was a 20-minute volunteer time. But these kids were really excited to have visitors come in to read. And I don't know about with you, but on mine, when I was finished, they all had to come up to me before they got their library card to tell me what they most loved about our town. And overwhelmingly, it was split between our downtown businesses and all of the animals and wildlife.
This is the theme this year?
Yep, some spoke of the public library, the Main Street Library. And I was particularly touched by the two young ladies who went last. The first said that she was most grateful in town for her family. But the last young lady came up and said that what she was most grateful for in town was the Main Street School library, and then gave her a huge hug. And if that doesn't melt your heart, and I don't know what--
I left there almost in tears. I was so, it was the most joyful experience I had had in a long time. And that might sound a little corny, but it was fun. I haven't read to children in a very long time. I will tell you that mine was on a Friday afternoon at 2:00. And the kids were not really, they were done for the week, right? We all know how we feel at the end of our day on Friday. They were. They were so good. Once I started reading, though, they, at first it was this whole, you're my way. No, you're my way. But once I started reading, and the book I read didn't have an ending.
Oh, boy.
So it was interesting. But anyway, it was, what an honor to be able to go and read to the kids.
And what was really exciting is Kristen Murphy was one of the-- Kristen Murphy came to read. And I know Eileen Flockhart from the Tree Committee. And the school librarian's really excited to get in touch with Kristen and try to see how she can interact with Kristen and the Tree Committee and some sustainability stuff and all that. So I see a really good relationship starting there.
Collaboration going on, right? Yeah.
The challenge came, though, before I read the book, when three little boys came up and asked me who I was and why I was there. And I was trying to explain as best I could what the Select Board does. And I was having a difficult time. So I said, you know, we're just, the Select Board works to try to bring about some really cool things for the town, to which one boy replied to a fourth boy around the corner, hey, come check this guy out. He's going to do some cool things.
You got that right.
And mine were excited because when I was born, I was, they learned I have always lived here. And the house I lived in when I was born was, they could see it out the window of the library. So that was kind of a fun play, you know? It was just, yeah. I think next time, I'm probably going to a Friday afternoon because they were so tired. But you know, I enjoyed every moment of it. So it was fine, no matter when, I can fill in.
And with the theme of keeping people in town employed with the town, the assistant librarian came up to me and asked me how my kids were by name, which kind of threw me off, until he explained that he was one of their camp counselors at summer camp. And he had since moved on to work at the Main Street Library. So both my kids were excited to hear that he was well. Anyway, so thank you to Main Street School Library for inviting our community leaders.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Correspondence, we have a notice of a public hearing, which will be March 31st at 7:00. And this is for the K-9--
The new K-9 program at the police department.
Chief Poole and I talked about that last week. We had some correspondence from folks on the pickpocket dam vote. And let's see. Mr. Dean, do you want to talk about the legislative update from the Community Power Coalition?
Yeah, this is, again, there have been several energy bills in the legislature this year. And this is one of those where they had to report back to us that several bills did not make it out of committee by a party line vote of 10 to 8. One of the most important bills that was in that mix was HB 760, which would have helped supply costs subsidization by customers served by third-party providers. So it didn't, it actually would have prevented utility supply cost subsidization by customers served by third-party providers such as Community Power, but it didn't pass. So it didn't get out of committee. And that was really unfortunate.
It is unfortunate.
So, and there were three other bills that also were ITL'd out of that committee. HB 755, HB 759, and HB 761. So not a lot of progress on the Community Power front, unfortunately.
That is very unfortunate.
Yeah, trying to deal with net metering as well on one of those bills. And that didn't escape committee.
Buildings that actually could help our communities are not faring very well.
No, we have a committee there that is probably more in line with the-- Well, they voiced a strong preference for things to play out at the PUC. But depending on the PUC to do the right thing in these situations has been somewhat of a challenge. So you can put a marker on that.
Okay. And then in addition to our NHMA legislative update, there's an email on the Housing Advisory Committee. And presumably, these are some of the bills you were referencing.
Yeah, that's what, yeah. So if anybody wants to read them, please read the packet and the correspondence because really, if I started to go through them, we could be here a while.
No, I mean, it's pretty--
And it's there, it's available. So yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Reviewing the board calendar, again, we meet on the 31st. In April, the 14th and the 28th, and then May 12th. We'll stop there. And when Selectwoman Gilman's back, we can try to find a date in April for our goal-setting session. One of the things we talked about last week with the E-team, we actually did this in '21 when we were still meeting via Zoom because of COVID. Rather than meeting on a Saturday, we found a weeknight like around 4:30, 5:00 o'clock after work that we could meet if, because Saturdays become tough when you're trying to get seven people together. So I'm not saying we will do that, but it's certainly an option. If we find that the Saturdays are filling up, you know, we can find a night to go over to the Senior Center, you know, 5:00, 6:00 o'clock, whatever works best for the board.
I'm happy to do Saturdays despite my tardiness last year, but I do have more flex during the week.
I think that applies to all of us.
Monday nights might be a night we could consider just because none of us have committee assignments those nights.
It's a great point. That's good, on an alternate night, Select Board. And it doesn't have to be 7:00. It can be 5:00, 5:30, whatever folks want. And we can do it over at the Senior Center like we typically do.
It would be helpful for me if we could lock that in sooner rather than later because my evening, I mean, everything fills up pretty quick.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm happy, I am also happy to do whatever works for everybody. And it just sort of depends.
Me, too.
Would it be okay if we took that up on the 31st? Did you want to do a email? Okay, all right, that works.
And then on that same line, if we could try to, the very next meeting would be either the 19th or Memorial Day weekend, that Tuesday. So if we could get that ironed out sooner than later, too, just with the holiday weekend.
Yep. Yeah, no, I started looking at that. And then, you know, Julie had called, so--
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I'm all about scheduling out.
I know you are. I just, especially with the holidays, so we can make personal plans.
Absolutely. No, that's very fair.
If it's possible.
Of course it is. Anything else from the board? I would entertain a motion to enter into non-public under RSA 91A 32A.
So, second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clark, please. The roll call?
That's me.
That is you.
Selectman Chartrand.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
The clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes 4-0. The board will be going into non-public. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.